And I'm gonna go ahead and start broadcasting, okay? So Mrs. Hennig, the floor is yours. I'll just share my screen.
We've been muted except for Tony.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the school board meeting on May 11th. It's a regular board meeting. Let's start with the pledge allegiance. If you could stand please at your position. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Lego to do the roll call.
Yes, Madam President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko. Still with us there, Dr. Koschko?
He's been muted. Excuse me.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Harris for information.
Thank you, Mrs. Issing. We have some announcements tonight. First of all, we all want to thank the students. They have two weeks to go. The reach to 180 days to school. They're doing an excellent job and we already praise them for stepping up because I know this is a new situation for all of them. The teachers, the feedback we received from teachers and principals, everyone's doing well. Special thanks to parents and guardians for all that they do because we could not do this without you. And I truly mean that because I do have kids in my own at home that we're helping with as well. So I completely understand that it's new for all of us. I also want to thank the teachers for doing an excellent job for adapting to remote instruction. We learned a lot by doing it. Last week, Scott Inglays did send out a survey regarding suggestions for improvement of online learning as we were preparing for all possibilities for next year based on all scenarios. As of now, we have not heard anything regarding next year, but we wanted to be prepared if school was in session, if school was remote, if school was a combination of both. We also want to plan for kids or families that may not want to send their kids back due to the health scare. Again, we just want to be ready for whatever the state decides to do so we will have all different plans in place. All the extra computers for grades K and for grades one and two will be in. Actually, they're in right now. We have iPads for kindergarten. So next year, we'll truly be one-to-one school with K to 12. Where computers or kindergartens have iPads. With the state restrictions, this week come up to be yellow. There are some different things we can do in the building. So the principals will be sending home letters as far as end of the year book collections, computer collections, locker cleanouts. A lot of students have been asking about that. They might have something in their locker or they have something in their desk. So the principals will of each building will be sending out something shortly. Keep in mind, we also have some senior events coming up. We're very excited about the parade on May 21st. It's the senior parade. We also have a senior dance and a graduation scheduled in June. And we also have makeup dates for July as well. I want to thank everyone for participating, and this is from the community, the teachers, the staff at each school, the building principals. For the food drives at all different schools, they were very much a success. It filled several trucks of food and approximately $8,000 was collected through the food char, the food bank. All items of money were stay in this area, which is a nice thing. I want to thank all the staff members for their participation in all the teacher parades, the senior assigned delivery, the staff video creations. We had amazing support from all the school staff and families as well. I also want to thank Aramark, the school nurses and all the building aides and library aides that have helped during the breakfast and lunch distributions on Monday and Wednesday. It was a great deal of help. I did send out a notice last week that Kennywood School Picnic, of course, had to be postponed. We had several dates. I know it was pretty late in August to choose. There were not too many dates, but the nice thing about August 22nd was that our high school marching band is scheduled to perform that day. So it's a nice tie-in. I usually go down for the band picnic day anyhow. They do a great job as they march throughout the park. So we chose August 22nd as the makeup day for Kennywood. And finally, I want to congratulate Lisa Popovich, and I know I sent that home, but I want to say it again, for being awarded High Marks School Nurse of the Year. It was very well deserved. It was a great honor for Lisa and she got that recognition on National Nurses' Day, School Nurses' Day, which was past Wednesday. And that is all I have, Mrs. Issing.
Dr. Harris, this may be a great opportunity to mention that our online program and our own cyber school that we will be offering also in the fall.
Yes, we always have our eAcademy. And currently, this year, we had about 43 students who were enrolled in our own eAcademy. It's very similar to what you might hear when you see like some students they get a cyber school or a PA cyber. It's comparable to that, but it's actually taught by all the teachers in the West Vernon County. And you, but the only thing, the only difference is when you're finished, you actually receive a Penn Trafford School District diploma. And you could also, if you're enrolled in eAcademy, you could also attend Penn, you could also be in Penn Trafford activities as well, which is a nice, it's nice because some students don't want to have the experience of being in school, but they also want to participate in after-school activities. So this gives them an opportunity.
Right. Thank you. At this time, is Mr. Lego going to be presenting the preliminary budget? That's what's on the agenda here.
I'm ready if you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Issing. You know, normally at this meeting, I would go through a formal presentation and we'd go line by line through the budget and take a look at changes from last year and what our options are. This year certainly is a lot different. And we have been providing you information on the budget the best we know it. There are still a lot of things that are in a state of flux. We don't have any information what the state's going to look like in terms of their subsidies. It's still trickling in what local revenues are going to look like, although they're projected to take some serious losses. So to a certain extent, we're putting a budget together with a lot more uncertainty than there is certainty. So I'm gonna, in a second, I'm gonna share my screen and I'm just gonna give a condensed version because, you know, we have given you all information related to some of the specifics and where some of the areas that were adjusted were gonna lie. Again, when we started this process, we sought the input of the principals, of Mr. Bracco, Mr. Hetrick, you know, all the, all the key players in the district to get suggestions in terms of how we can cut the budget. We know revenues are gonna take a significant hit. So we had to come up with ways to come up with some cuts that quite honestly are gonna be very painful. They're gonna be across the board. And really, there isn't any area of the district operations that is untouched by this budget. So I'll present you some scenarios of what possibly we could do to eliminate some of the pain. But make no mistake, it is gonna be painful. So I'm gonna share my screen with you now. So bear with me for one second. Okay. Brett, could you tell everybody that they are on mute so they're not gonna be able to ask questions? So you might want to give an opportunity to ask questions periodically from the board members. Okay, well, let me, let me run through this initially and then we'll open it up for questions. So I think it'd just be easier if we try to present some of the information and then go to the question. So, thank you, Scott. Okay, so looking at our state revenue, you know, normally, I'm sorry, we're starting with local revenue. We're projecting a decrease of $722,000. I'll show you in a second where that comes from. That's a 2.3% decrease from last year. You know, this number's never decreased in the 28 years that I've been doing this. So certainly, we're in uncharted territories. State revenue, we're looking at a modest decrease there. And again, I'll show you in a second. Most of that comes from the loss of transportation subsidy. But, you know, hopefully, we're saving some money on our transportation bill to offset that. Federal revenue, we have a one-time influx of $250,000 from our access program. Again, just a one-time deal to help get us through this year. So that's a significant increase there. But if you look overall, our budget is down projected to be $1 million or almost 2%. A million dollars is over three mils of tax dollars. It is a significant impact to us. Quite honestly, I hope that I'm wrong and that these numbers come in better than I'm projecting. But if you take it some of the, take a look at some of the information put out by the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, they project our local losses to be closer to 1.2 million as opposed to 722,000. So we're showing numbers that aren't quite as dire as theirs, but I think our information is a little bit better. So where does the, where do those big numbers come from? Well, actually, in real estate taxes, you know, we grew by $573,000 this year over last. And I really don't see that number going down. That number should stay pretty consistent. I think homes are still selling, not, maybe not as quickly. But, so I'm not anticipating that number to increase any, but I'm not anticipating a decrease. But it is a healthy $500,000 increase over last. When we get into our per capita taxes, you know, these are all, a lot of these are income-based. So you'll see some decreases there. We anticipate people not being able to pay them. So we're looking at some small decreases in our per capita's. Again, right here though, in our earned income, you know, we're looking at a pretty significant loss potentially. 12 and a half percent, that's pretty much in line. Most experts say that districts are gonna lose between 12 and 17%. So again, we're on the low end of the estimates, but it's still a decrease of $500,000. Real estate transfers, again, we think that'll slow down. So we're expecting a decrease of about 33% or another $150,000. Interest earnings, we know we're gonna take a significant, I'm sorry, delinquents. Again, we had a one-time, we collected one extra period last two years ago. So, so that's why that number's a little bit inflated. Currently, we expect this year to collect 700,000. If people are delinquent, they're probably less likely to pay. So again, a decrease of about $300,000 in delinquent collections. On our investments, we've already seen the impact of rates going down. 78% is not an unrealistic number since rates are basically at zero or next to zero. So a loss of $275,000 or almost another mils worth of taxes there. And then if you go through the rest of the numbers in local, they're, they're not really significant. But overall, again, we're looking at a decrease of $722,000 in local revenue. From the state side, we're hoping that we don't get a cut in basic subsidy. We're certainly not anticipating an increase. In terms of special ed, again, we're hoping not to get a decrease, but just to be held harmless. There's the, the decrease in our transportation subsidy because we, you know, aren't paying for the last two and a half months of the year. So because we're saving on the expense, we're gonna lose on the revenue, which is, which trails by a year. A little decrease to our tax, or that's the casino monies that we get for the homestead, farmstead exclusions. Social Security revenue and retirement revenue are based on actual salaries. So just a slight decrease in Social Security, but we have, you know, we've eliminated a lot of salary in our preliminary budget. Under federal revenues, you'll see that there's the $250,000 one-time. That'll basically wipe out the balance we have in our access account. We typically use it for one-time expenditures. This year, we're using it to plug that hole. So again, overall, you'll see last year, we budgeted 57.9 million. This year, we're at 56.9. So to run through the expenditures real quickly to show you where those are at. Regular programs, again, that's where the bulk of all our teaching salaries are at. So given our contract, even with some other cuts that we've made, we're still seeing an increase of almost half a million dollars or a 1.5% decrease. We have eliminated some positions in special education programs. We've also shifted some of those. We've had some retirements. So that's, number's actually down. A pretty significant 10% increase in the tech budget this year, which isn't final. That may change slightly. And then everything else, again, you know, you're seeing these moderate increases, 3, 3.5%. You know, if you keep in mind, the, the teacher's contract has a close to a 4% increase this year. So those kind of are reflected in some of those positions. There are also some administrative salaries in there that Act 93 provides some increases. So those numbers are still, still up. Custodial maintenance, we made significant custodial maintenance budget. We've eliminated some positions. We have eliminated a lot from our contracted services line item, repairs that we make routinely. We decided that it might be best if we have things that break once we expend those dollars, that we'll take those out of our reserve fund that we have, which is separate from the general fund. We've also had several retirements, which have helped. So, you know, a very significant $700,000 decrease or 12%. Student transportation, those are contracted and based on actual runs. So, I mean, we're looking at a $187,000 increase. That could be on the light side. If social distancing requires us to run more buses, you know, a bus costs about $36,000 or $37,000 a year. So for every bus that we would need to add, we'd add another $30,000 or $40,000. And given that reimbursement, it is only about 30%. You know, that's a significant hit to the budget if in fact we have to add more transportation. Under student activities, we made cuts across the board there. So that's $140,000 decrease. And here's the fund transfer that we typically make every year, that we put a mill aside for capital projects. This year, we just can't justify making that transfer and hitting the fund balance for a transfer outside of the general fund. So overall, with the cuts we've made, we still have a decrease of $500,000 or just 1%. And typically, we're looking at a 2% increase every year, year over year. So this year with the 1% decrease, it's a pretty significant decrease from last year. So in summary, again, our budget for the expenditures is 500, I'm sorry, 57 million point four. With the current revenue of 56.9 million, we would need to take approximately $470,000 from the fund balance to make the budget balance this year. If we put a one-mill increase on, you would need almost $200,000 to balance the budget. If you went two mills, you'd actually have $100,000 that you could add back into the budget in expenditures to balance. And if you went to the maximum on the index, it would be a, you'd have 372,000 additional expenditures that you could add back. So those are the scenarios. That's the fund balance required. Again, you know, the administration did a very difficult job in trying to come up with the least painful scenarios to get to where we could have a budget that's reasonable. But again, there's a lot of pain across the board. And I think Matt will talk about here in a second, some of the cuts that we made to get us to this initial 57.4 million dollars. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and I'll answer any questions that you all have. Questions? Comments?
Brett, take my, waiting to take my turn.
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
Okay, Brett, Nick Petrusi. This is, I mean, listen, that is assuming that our state reimbursement will be the same as last year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's a decrease with the state being, again, all the reasons is what are in the paper. Right now, because of lax, lack of tax revenue coming in because of COVID-19, they're projecting right now at $4 billion in red. Am I correct about that? Am you approximate?
You are correct.
So likelihood of us getting even the same amount as we got last year is gonna be very slight, I would think.
Well, that's, that's, Nick, that's a distinct possibility. Now, one of the things that could help this year is they may take the federal monies that they're getting and use that to prop up the education budget. My fear with that is, if you remember back when Governor Rendell was in office and we got the stimulus monies, basically, they just backed off their share. And then when Governor Corbett was elected, he didn't fill those dollars back up. So we ended up somewhere about a half a million dollars in the hole.
In one year?
Correct.
That was in one year?
It took three or four years to get back to where we were before.
And that also even goes back to stimulus package when President Obama got elected and it was a two-year stimulus package and the state was spending like it was gonna be continuous and it wasn't. Then everybody had to make up for the big drop-off in the third year.
So our concern is the same thing could happen now.
Yes, unfortunately, I think you're absolutely correct. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay, Mr. Bill Leonard.
But, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I've taken that in and there's a lot of, all this really would come down to. And then really, those are really good numbers. I mean, crazy numbers. But stability to pay regardless of what we do here. And I just give one example and I'm gonna get off and I'm gonna listen. I just, let me just zero in on one aspect you gave. Let's just take this, maybe I make my point. Delinquent tax collection. Well, there's such a systemic risk right now that they, what they're even doing with on the municipal side of things, that they don't even have a wish to collect these things. So that's the systemic risk here that that's how, well, anyway, that's just one example of where things are. And let me just get off now because there's a lot more I could say, but I just don't want to take up all the time. I'm gonna listen now.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Mr. Matarazzo.
You had mentioned to the board in earlier meetings that our total deficit was approximately 2.9 million. Is that correct?
That was the initial deficit before we made the cuts, correct?
Yeah, okay. So the 2.9 million was a statement made that we needed to recognize. Thank you.
Correct, yep. Any other questions or comments right now? Okay, so.
This is Scott. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is, Matt, are you gonna go into a little more detail in some of the cuts we're discussing?
Yeah, I have a chart to show some of the cuts. And I also have a chart that explains sort of the mills and my recommendation for if we could add some mills and use our fund balance and a combination of both because we had to make some drastic cuts to balance this budget. But I want to see if we can get some of our items back that we cut. If you're looking, first of all, we can kind of start at the bottom of the chart. I'm sorry, the bottom of the paper, it lists the different items out of the, and Brett briefly talked as he went through with the building office expense, 165,000. Maintenance took a $5.75, athletics 100,000, instructional supplies 225,000, professional development 60,000. I'll skip over my next one. Field trips for 100,000. Program, summer learning camp, which might not be able to happen anyhow due to the health crisis, and tutors, 82,000. And it gave us 1,940,000 total. Although all the cuts were difficult, the hardest one is the one I skipped over and that's the student learning assistance and the instructional coach. I would like to actually ask the board if you can consider raising some mills and using some fund balance to actually get those from not happening. And if you can go up to my chart, and I'm using personal, okay, thank you. I know Brett gave us the scenario with zero mills. We would be, if we didn't do anything, we already have to use 470,000 from our fund balance. Just a couple. But if we use $800,000 this year, we would have 330,000. We can port towards different items we cut. If you look at the one mill, it already puts us 192,000 short. Even if we do the one mill, we would have to use our fund balance, $800,000, and it would give us $608,000. We are close to actually the total of 633,000, just with that one mill. Of course, 1.2 mills puts us at the 633, or at least covers it. And if we just did one mill, I can also make it work because I know sometimes you don't like to put the 0.2 mills on and sometimes we don't. But that is, you know, up to the board decision. Of course, if we go up to two mills, we'd already be 104,000 to the good. And as soon as we use the 800,000, we wouldn't have to make $900,000 worth of cuts. And of course, if we went to the index, we'd be 372,000 to good. With our fund balance that we can use this year, we have over a million dollars over these cuts actually taken back. So these are things to consider. And remember with the mills, that's one thing about the mills is, I know it's a hard time to do it this year, so you might not be willing to go to the index. I actually get it, but if we at least can go a little bit to the 1.2, we can at least get some of our items back that help our instructional programs. As you know, this past year, our scores on School Digger, we hit the highest we've ever been. We were 11 in the state. Prior year, we was 22. The prior year, I think we were 30 something. So every year, we keep getting better. I contribute the instructional coaches as well as the SLAs to helping the teachers, the helping the scores, and helping the students with the extra help that they need.
Matt, this is Scott.
Yes.
Actually, probably a question for Brett, but you probably could answer as well. The 800,000 from the fund bounds, that's basically a one-time money that next year, we would need to have to find that same money next year, correct?
Correct. Brett, what do we have in our fund balance right now?
We had, at the beginning of the year, we had $6 million.
Okay. What is typically amount do we need to keep in our fund balance?
Well, to, for unreserved expenses, basically to use, you know, for, for really one-time emergency kind of things, it's recommended five to 8% of your budget be reserved. We also have another $2 million that we had set aside years ago for either capital projects or the Peasars increases. And we haven't tapped into that money yet. We've been fortunate. So right now, we have 2 million reserved, 4 million unreserved. So that 4 million would be in that 5 to 8% range.
Thank you. I know what you're also saying, Scott, is this money, once it comes out, it's a one-time thing. We would have to worry about it for next year. And that's where going forward, one thing, we have, we don't know anything about how the revenue is gonna go forward right now. So there might be some consideration for either two mills, so we could take less of our fund balance down. That could be a possibility. Or it could also be a possibility, remember, this is the one year that we did have some savings. We didn't have too much savings from the schools not being in session because due to the Act 13, everything, we still paid everything that we had to pay. We did have some savings of 400,000 on transportation. And that's why I kind of put that in there because normally I would not expect to use that much.
Well, Matt, we wouldn't have to make up the entire $800,000 in the following year. It'd only be 400,000. Well, Matt, we wouldn't have to make up the entire 800,000 dollars in the following year, it'd only be 400,000, is that correct?
Every year you have to look to see, um, it all depends on how the revenue comes in as well.
And the transportation.
And the transportation and everything else that comes in.
Uh, Mr. Lego, uh, Dr. Harris, which either, the chart you gave us gives, puts things into some different perspective. And what does a one-mill increase, again, average, monthly increase, what would one mill cost the average resident as opposed to two mills, as opposed to 2.9? Could you share that, please?
Sure. That's on the chart.
Brett actually has it on the chart if he can.
That, that average, that if there's one mill increase, it came to $2.33 monthly?
Average, if you look in the first column, it's $2.33.
Correct.
I just lost the, um, just lost the chart. Minor technology difficulties, but one mill is probably about $2.33, two mills, about $4.67 a month, 2.9, about $6.70 a month.
And that's for, that's for a home, that's for a home, uh, assessed, assessed at $28,000.
How much?
The assessed value is $28,000, that's the median in the, in the district right now.
So that is a median figure?
Correct. Some would pay more, some would pay less.
Right. And I also understand that at this time, it is, um, very unfortunate with a lot of the, the unemployment rate and everything else going on, that this is a hit for some people too. And I completely understand it because, um, with everything we're doing with the food drives and the lunch collections and everything else, I'm just worried about the future of, you know, the school districts, the kids, some of the instructional programs. That's kind of when I was talking about using the fund balance and maybe keeping taxes lower than normal. But at least that give us an opportunity to have some of these cuts back. And in fact, I also know the statement that all of these cuts were hard to make, and then when you're looking at it, they do have some impact on, um, our education, our institute, but I am strongly concerned about losing the SLAs and the instructional coach.
Brett, this is Scott. Um, from a discussion tonight, though, we will have to make some recommendation on either a zero-mill increase or some fraction of, of that tonight, correct?
Yeah, basically, there's two things that you need to adopt tonight. One is the total of the expenditures and the other is the millage rate to go with that. So I've shared with you what the preliminary cuts resulted in for the, uh, expenditures, and then the millage rate is whatever you decide to do. So those are the two numbers we need to come up with.
Hello, this is Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is, um, now, tonight's is the preliminary budget, that's for, then, when we move, now, what do we move into after, obviously, the budget itself? So how, because this thing can change in, in, uh, a month, uh, as, as, as one word, testing, testing for the body. And with the ability to pay and what to do this, so, um, where, tonight's approval goes, then what's the process?
Well, the process is that once we adopt the preliminary budget this evening, then we make it available for inspection for, well, there has to be a 10-day, uh, notice and then a 20-day inspection period, so basically for 30 days, we need to have the budget available for the public to view. And whatever we adopt will be posted on the web tomorrow. And then, you know, at our June meeting, we need to adopt the final budget, and between now and then, we can add revenue, we can subtract revenue. We can add millage, we can subtract millage, we can add expenditures, we can subtract expenditures. So we can make any adjustments up or down that, that the board and the administration would agree to, uh, but we do need to adopt tonight. The preliminary is a starting point to give the public the opportunity to give their input if they so desire.
Thanks, that's, that's, just him.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have a question concerning the student learning assistants and instructional coach?
Yeah, I have one, uh, Nick, Nick Patruci talking. Um, I love the scores. Out of 500 score districts, we're number 11, that's what we're here for, educate the kids, and, um, I, I don't want to do anything that's going to, um, make them scores go down. And, um, if it means we got to keep the SLAs on and the coaches on, I'm, I'm for that. And, um, and the 1.2 mills, Matt, that you mentioned to maintain that, that's if there are, state does not reduce our subsidy.
Absolutely, still have to wait on that information.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, I realize that, but, and I'm just trying to think of preliminary budget, and I wish Phil would speak up here a little bit, it's, it's, it's his committee. But I think, and right now, my part, a tentative two-mill increase, because I'm, I'm making 1.2 to two mills, what I'm suggesting, and I'm just one, one vote. But I'm suggesting it because I think we're going to get a decrease in state subsidy, but I'm, and I hope I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, and it gets the same, then go back to 1.2 mills. But I don't want to go below 1.2 mills because I want to maintain that high standard of education we're, we performing this past year. That's all I have to say.
Very clear, Dr. Harris, um, I would just like to echo Nick's comments on, uh, the SLAs. If, I know, I know how strongly you feel about keeping them on and what the value they bring to the district. And I myself would like to keep them on, and if that means raising a mill, I know it's difficult time to do that. But we're, we got to remember, we're here for the kids and we want to send well-educated kids out into this world, and if that's what it takes, I'm, I'm behind at least one mill, I may consider 1.2, um, I'd like to see if there's something that could bring it down, like hold it at one, but that's where I stand.
I got something.
Uh, this is Jim, Matarazzo calling, still commenting. Uh, again, I just want to echo with my, uh, two fellow guys here. The SLA, the, the test scores have meant so much, the quality of our school district, can't say enough, and Dr. Harris, I know you've shared your feelings on those, those educational supports, and as the educational person within our midst, do you want to share anything else about the SLA and, uh, as far as them helping our scores and the coaches, how important they've been?
Um, both, actually, we did a presentation earlier last year with the instructional coaches, they actually came in and kind of shared some of the data they collect and the different things they do. And very beneficial, very beneficial to, um, the teachers as well as administrators, and the SLA was very beneficial to everybody. Even when I was going on the parade and I saw the different SLAs out there, it was funny seeing kids, um, drive through and they had a sign and they had the, the name of their SLA on the signs, or some had teacher signs, some also had their SLAs, you know, Mrs. Karestis or, um, Mrs. Ringer down in, um, Level Green. So different things like that, it was kind of nice to see, so there is a lot of good programs that they do, and also a lot of the SLAs, they actually do the eight, the morning tutoring when students come in and they also do the enrichment clubs. The ones that start at eight o'clock at some of the different schools, so that's also an extra support that we have, um, prior to school starting. I remember the one time on Double Grain, Mr. Denafis said almost every single person in one grade carried up to the, um, club that they had before school. When I went down there, it was, they had it in two different, three different rooms, it was kind of funny, and it seemed like all the kids in the whole grade level was there. Uh, that's a good building, um, for that program, and some of the other buildings do the same thing, similar, I'm just choosing that as a story.
Yeah, Dr. Harris, this is Scott speaking.
Sure.
Um, and you were, you're correct in that the instructional coaches did come in and do actually a very outstanding presentation, linking results with data. Do you have a similar, um, analysis of the SLAs with regards to linking, uh, outcomes and data points together?
I can do that for you, Dr. Cox.
I think it would be very helpful to, to try to connect, um, obviously our scores at the end of the day and, and with the resources that we're putting forward because as, I, I do remember there was some really good data around what the instructional coaches had been doing and the benefit to, you know, obviously the student at the end, so I would be very interested in seeing, uh, if you do have some of those data points.
I will do that.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stovar, um, is, is there a, uh, an age group or a grade level that you seem, or you, you feel is, uh, gets a better benefit from the SLAs than other groups?
We have the SLAs moving all day long in grades K to five, and also at the middle school, they are very, work very heavily. Um, K, K to two, when we use them there, remember, you leave second grade unable to read and to keep up on grade level math, sometimes it's very hard to catch up. That being said, we also get great benefits with the students in three, four, and five who are having a difficulty in math and reading, and they're also a tested grade. So I, I've seen positives for both K to two and positives three to five, and as well as the middle school. Because we basically, here was heavily on our math, um, instruction, because there's also, and we do have, even though we're high scoring, we still would like to do better in the middle level math. But now, to answer your question, I, I can, they're very helpful, K to two and three to five.
What, what about your thoughts on middle school, high school?
Middle school, even with the middle school math program, um, a great deal, and it's excellent because they're, once students are taking the different levels of math, that they, they get extra help, and they sometimes, um, the kid might want to qualify for different, you know, they might not be able to go in one math class or another, but with that extra support in there, they make them, they're able to stay and continue. So it does provide them with a great deal of support, but if I was having SLAs anywhere, I would have to definitely say the elementary school would be the prime use.
Okay, then one more, uh, high school, um, what's the difference between how you use an SLA and then we sometimes bring tutors in at different times? Do we, uh?
Um, the tutors are only brought in during the testing season, and it's basically for the children who, as you know, passing the state keystone is a height, um, it's supposed to be a high school graduation requirement, I know it's been changed the last several years, but we want to make sure everyone can pass the biology, the math, and the English keystone test, so they actually bring them in for remediation and extra support, working with those students that need it.
Okay, thanks.
But that has also changed over the years because they keep saying it's a high school graduation requirement, but that has also been ways.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Tony. Um, I'm, I like the idea of maintaining the pieces that are pertinent to our students' achievement. I do like this idea of also seeing, like, some data on the SLAs, but I, I'm, I'm really hesitant to cut in that area or to cut for the coaches, their presentation and the job they do has been excellent. Are there any other areas that we could look at, even if we, um, end up, like, freezing some expenses? Any other areas that we could possibly discuss that do not directly impact the actual students, their education?
In addition to the cuts we already made?
Yeah, are we miss, are we missing any, any areas that we could be missing?
I think we looked through every single category, like, community, um, support or services, and I don't think there was any other category that we did not visit, because we kind of wanted to, um, look for every single thing we can. Um, some of these are also based on some retirements, but we were also thinking, when we took the instructional supplies, we did take some money from the textbook budget, but we said if we had, we have an eight-year, I'm sorry, a seven-year cycle, so if we have to pause on that cycle for one year, that might not be an issue. Professional development workshops, I know the teachers and everyone would understand if we just held off on that, I mean, we're doing great, um, by using the coaches and all the, everything. I think we're good in that area. Summer learning camp, I told you, we might have a healthcare crisis, um, this summer, so I don't think we're even eligible to, you know, have it. And even with the tutors, I said we can hold off on that, so I did go through every category, but, I mean, we continue looking. We can always go through everything once more and get some more input from the building principals and every, everybody.
I mean, we did, uh, the, the community programs were discussed as a, as a potential option because, you know, we do make donations to the rec programs and libraries, which don't have what we do instructionally, so that was an area that we thought that was something to consider as well.
And the one reason we didn't talk about libraries is because the board, about two years ago, um, we already decreased the libraries, because remember, we put them on a five-year plan that every year they were going to get a percentage lower than what they did, so it's almost about two years, maybe two, it might be two years left or three years left, but we already took a percentage the last two years off, and we already told them that every year they were going to get something lower for five years, so there was already a plan for that, um, to remove the donation.
Well, um, how much is in that category? Can you go over that, please, and help us divide it up?
Greg, can you pull that up? Because offhand, I just know of the, we have PTARC, we have the rec basketball, we have libraries, and I know we also have a crossing guards in there, but it's not, but that's definitely a program we need for the crossing guards because it's been, it's actually used by us, but we just put it in the same category as community expense.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, $50,000 total in that line item, $35,000 for contributions, and 15,000 is set aside for crossing guards. So, again, in the grand scheme of trying to balance, you know, a 2.9 million dollar deficit, it's, it's kind of insignificant compared to some of these big item expenses that are salary-related, because salaries are where all the dollars are. And again, my other concern, just personally, is the hit that we've made to our maintenance budget. You know, every year we've cut a little bit out of that budget, and I just, I'm, I'm getting concerned that it's going to be hard to keep the buildings up and running if we keep cutting monies out of that, so keep that in mind, it's something we're going to have to consider. Instead of using those dollars that we set aside to improve the buildings, now we're going to be using it just to maintain the buildings.
Right. Nice, thank you.
Dr. Harris, and this, Jim, Matarazzo?
Yes.
Um, I think maybe some people should also be aware, those people that are watching, that, uh, some of the cuts, difficult cuts academically also deal with field trips. And, uh, maybe people should be aware of that, something else that's on the, for lack of better terms, the cutting block, if you want to share that?
Yeah, we have field trips, our biggest one, and we're still working with, um, Mr. Morasty, because our biggest trip, we don't know, usually in the fall, we go to Deer Valley, but we don't know, given the health situation, if that's even a possibility this year. So that's the reason we kind of put it on as a possibility, we might have been actually use it, so I know, um, that's a big bulk of the field budget.
Yep, and also the middle school.
And the middle school, this past year, that's actually one of the other, other savings we had, um, we always support the trip to Gettysburg, but due to the situation, we, the trip obviously was canceled.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Harris, this is Bill Kachasek.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I also want to mention to, to our, our constituents, our public, our taxpayers, that, uh, we did, uh, take them into consideration when we did, uh, looking at, uh, what programs could be, um, reduced for the upcoming school year. But we know that there are people in our area who have lost their jobs, uh, who've been. Who've been, who are not receiving any income at all, less hours, less money. And we do want them to realize that we are taking that into consideration as we discuss this. I appreciate the comments from our fellow board members. Nobody wants to see a decrease in our educational performance. But we have to strike a balance in the community that we live in to provide the best education we can for the money that we are able to spend, so. I appreciate the hard work everybody's done, but. Just a reminder, this is a preliminary budget, this isn't the final budget, so final decisions do not have to be made till June fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
One more Brett, this is Mr. Stovar Brett, ballpark figure if I'm looking at Matt's. One point two mils is about three dollars a month, does that make sense?
That's yes, correct.
Okay, that's all makes sense.
Dallas here. Comment on one point two mils in that number gate, that's for pretty. Who do you who thinks our house is appraised at twenty eight thousand? I'm not sure.
Well, this is Tony, remember that Westmoreland County does it like a quarter of the value.
I understand, I know that, but still, I know. Not not a phrase, yeah, I know what you mean, I say I used the wrong word. But the tax impact on my house for for one mil. Is certainly more than that and I don't live in a mansion. I just want I didn't want anybody labeled on the misconception that the majority of the people are only going to get a four dollar a month, which comes out to whatever math, you know, what the math is. Now, when we get a mill increase, my taxes seem to go up to over a hundred dollars a month, a hundred dollars a year. So. And I'm not living in a big mansion, I'm living in just a very, very average house.
All right. And so that's eight and a half dollars a month.
What is it? One point two mils is how much?
Well, you said like an average increase, if we go through taxes, it goes up like a hundred, your bill goes up about a hundred dollars a year? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it went up over a little a little over a hundred for for a mil, yeah. But I'd have to check and verify, it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's that's like nine, eight, nine dollars a month, but I'm I'm with you, I don't understand how those numbers are that low. Because it does seem like it goes up considerably whenever you get an increase and it's just not a couple of dollars a month and.
Yeah, and obviously. It goes on the estimated value of your house, appraised value, whatever they call it. And I struggled with it, I worked for government boards for over thirty years and I listened to commissioners selling different things, saying it's only this much or that much. And I'd sit at my desk and think for who, maybe McCullough, maybe little parts of Painter Town, but not for most of the people.
Don't forget Dallas, Westmoreland County, I think in Beaver County, I maybe I think it's Beaver, the only two counties since nineteen seventy two have not been reassessed. So if you bought if you bought, I bought my home in seventy six and I'm not complaining, believe me. Mine has not goes one mil, I do not go up a hundred dollars. And I have an average home, but mine does not go up a hundred dollars, but if remember, we don't reassess here in Westmoreland County, seventy to seventy two. You know, that's approaching fifty years now, there's never been reassessment in Westmoreland County and I think that's outstanding.
That is true, but there's two factors that have to be considered, A. If you get a building permit for any work done in your house, they come and reassess it, that's how mine was done.
I haven't done that, but you're right, that is true.
I got I got a building.
It's on the outside, you're right, if you add on or something like that, but if you do internally, there is no, there is no extra adjustment.
There would be if they could, they just don't on a lot. I've known the fact that this is the years. Here's what I'll tell you, the last time I got it, I got a a permit, it was to put a dish on the front of my house, extend it a little bit. And whenever he come out, he he did a full walk around my house, he says, I noticed the condenser out there, when did you get a whole house air conditioning? How long have you had that shed? That shed doesn't look as big as what's on the record. Oh, by the way, your sun porch looks like it's a little bigger. I got I got totally reassessed, Nick, and I says, and I told him, I says, and you're not coming in for a cup of coffee.
But just so we know that, Westmoreland County is blessed, no reassessment.
The last guy that got hired in the Penton's Trinity Development Department used to work as in the assessment department doing those assessments. Way downfield here, I'm usually the one that does this, I had something. We're all ears. All right, it's Bill Leonard. And I've heard all this and we're really talking about things here, come on. Look, the anecdotally, I'm going back to the SLAs because that's where this discussion starts, I'm all for keeping them. I'm going to be talking about two cents in my mouth right now. Let's keep them. But this other stuff, millages and increases, it's just influx. And it's it's we'll figure a way. And that's all I'm going to say about that, I'm really SLAs. Anecdotal, I've heard from kids, I've heard from parents, I mean, SLAs are, they're, I mean, I don't need data points. Now, I'm going to shut up and listen, but the numeric, the anecdotal lines up, the numerical doesn't and it won't. So we should be aware of that and to try to do that, I think Einstein died a while back, but anyway, I'm going to listen.
The question is, how will we fund the SLAs? We all, I think most of the board loves the SLAs. Or, you know, has a high opinion of them, but we got to be able to fund them. Something has to give here.
Dr. Harris, Bill Kachasik.
Yes.
We're assuming that regular instruction will take place in the fall. So what happens if we are online learning and you hire the SLAs?
Well, this past year.
Hire the SLAs, keep the SLAs.
If we kept them, one thing is this past year. They were used as resource teachers and as teachers who provided extra online help to the students. Because as you know, when we went offline, when we went out of school. We kept all our instructional programs and any student who needed extra help, we assigned SLAs to actually give them extra help. So they would have to continue, if we were online, they would have to continue doing their online services.
But that's not what they were intended to be used for, correct?
Correct, they have their best bang for their buck when they're in school servicing kids and students, so the same thing, students.
And I know you had mentioned that you there's different scenarios on the table. You know, the percentage chance, you know, this is just one board member's opinion, you know, there's a lot left to be said on whether we're even going to be in school come this fall.
That's correct, we were told, the secretary of. Rivera told us to plan on every scenario possible and that's what we're doing in the next couple of weeks, we started with a survey. And we're going to go from there because as of now, there has been no announcements made whatsoever. But we were just planning for all scenarios because after what happened last year, we don't want to be, we don't want to be planned.
If there's something else to consider when you're making a decision here or thinking about what to do as a board member?
That is correct, a lot of our. Online services, they did help and debate on that, but they're best suited for classroom instruction.
When we get to the part of the meeting where there's a motion for tentative budget, I'll take. Board members considerations then on on what what we're looking at as far as what we're going to vote on as far as a tax increase or. Or whatever the whatever the discussion is going to bring about.
Thank you, is there any other questions? If not, then we can continue with the meeting. I hope I emphasized enough that. Cutting the two million is very hard and then with the situation, but I know we wanted to make all the cuts we can because we are definitely worried about what this does to the average taxpayer. And I get that because that was the directions I was given. But if we can get her some of the cuts that I have mentioned, getting them back, I would appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no further questions, let's continue. I do not, next section, now it's time for recognition of visitors, but I do not believe we have had anybody call in and request to ask a question or speak, so.
According to the information we put out, you had a sign up by six thirty.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dr. Harris, okay. Old businesses, is there any old business?
There is none this evening, Madam President.
All right, great, thank you. Executive sessions, well, we've been pretty busy while we've been off, we've had a few executive sessions. We met on Sunday, March twenty second, April sixth, April fourteenth, April twentieth, April twenty seventh and May fourth. During that time, we were discussing security as far as COVID nineteen is concerned. And all, by the way, all the meetings were held via Zoom. We were discussing personnel and attorney advisory matters and. Technical issues are so that we could go live with this meeting on today. All right, and this evening, I mean, an executive session was held prior to this meeting also. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move into the consent agenda part of the meeting. Does anybody have, other than personnel, athletics and extracurricular and the budget, does anybody have anything that they would like to remove? Any item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. That being said, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted under one motion?
Rich Nemec, you have a motion?
Okay, motion one, motion by Rich Nemec. Second. Second by Dallas Leonard, thank you. Question being called for, question?
Question.
Thank you. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all favorite emotions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. We will now move down to. Athletics and extracurricular, Mr. Matarazzo.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'd like to move to accept the following retirement, Mr. Jim Rocco, boys head basketball coach, district wide effective May eleventh, twenty twenty.
Question.
Okay, second by Mr. Dallas Leonard, question being called for, all favorite emotions say aye. All opposed, no? Motion carry.
Excuse me, Mrs. President, I'm Tony, I just wanted to say what a nice honor it was to watch Jim Rocco over the years coach the kids. And he definitely did a great job and we are going to miss him. He is retired at the end of the. And he did a lot of great things for the basketball program, there was always something going on for special tournaments and different things every time I showed up on the weekend. That he was doing with the kids and there was a lot of programs from elementary to middle school to high school, so. I do like to thank him for his time and I wish him well.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Harris.
One other comment is luckily he is staying on as a teacher, so that he might be a better teacher than a basketball coach, so that's that's the that's the good part of it. And I don't mean that that he's not a good basketball coach, just that he's a phenomenal teacher, so.
He's an outstanding teacher, if you have a chance, have your kids take forensic science because it's hands on, he does a fantastic job and we're lucky to have him there as a forensic.
Bill Leonard here, I participated in some of that stuff with Dr. Wecktop, it was really good stuff.
Yeah, I've actually, I think one of the greatest compliments I've heard about him as a as a teacher, because I I like the forensic aspect myself. Teachers actually told me that they would stop, if they're walking in the hall for whatever reason and he's giving a lecture, they actually sometimes stop and listen. So as much as we like him as a basketball coach, we we like him as a teacher.
Great program.
Yeah, it really is. Okay, now budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm going to read the first line and I'm going to stop at the amount and I'm going to open it up. To my fellow board members to go ahead and make a recommendation for the rest of the board to consider. Move to tentatively adopt the preliminary budget for the Penn Trafford School District for the twenty 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 one school year and the amount of. And I'll go ahead and open up a discussion as far as what what the proposal is going to be.
Phil, this is Scott speaking. I'm going to recommend a one mil increase. And I'm thinking of the obviously present state of some of our taxpayers. The uncertainty of going into this school year with regards to. State reimbursement, but I'm also thinking about, you know, we're using a one time. Fund balance of eight hundred thousand dollars to try to. Even meet the basic, whether it was zero mils, one, two mils in order of trying to meet this this year's budget. So I'm recommending, because it is only one time money that we go one mil, to try to ease the burden as we move into this coming school year.
Christina, this is Phil. Can I ask the procedure, just quick procedure, do I ask if anybody is going to second that and then we vote?
Yes, you could ask for Mr. Lego to fill in the total amount that's missing with that. Your budget in the for the one mil increase, so that's the recommendation from a board member and that's the motion and you need a second. Discuss that particular motion.
So is it at this time, is there any other board members willing to make a second on the one mil proposal?
I I have a question, though. The part of the motion that we haven't filled in is what the total budget would be. So, Dr. Koschko, my question to you is, are you proposing that number be the number that was presented as part of the discussion earlier without any add backs?
Yes, Brett, from a preliminary budget standpoint, yes. I still think we have some more work to do on both sides of the expenditures and revenue prior to next month's. Final budget, I do have some questions with regards to some data on particular cause and effect. With some of the programs that we have that I would like to have that before, you know, making a final decision.
Okay, give me one second to pull up the the millage rate for both. Westmoreland and Allegheny, one second.
Now, this is Jim Matarazzo, if I can ask Christina. Well, Brett's doing that. If someone had a different percent instead of the one point mil. With that, if everybody if we vote for that, is there an opportunity then to say, well, no, I would put a different number in there? Will we have to go through the same process again?
If the if the motion would pass with just the one mil, then that's the. The budget as passed for preliminary, if it fails, then it's certainly open for another board member. To make another motion or you can ask the person moving the motion and then the individual seconding the motion. Whether or not they would accept an amendment, so currently you have before you a. Proposed motion for one mil and then Brett's looking for, excuse me, Mr. Lego is looking for information to fill that in. We'll have to see whether or not this particular recommendation will call for a second. If it doesn't get a second, then that particular motion dies and then the floor is then open for additional motions.
So the motion would read, move to tentatively adopt the preliminary budget for the Penn Trafford School District for the twenty twenty one school year and the total amount of. Fifty seven million, four hundred sixty seven thousand dollars, three hundred sixty six. For advertisement and publication in accordance with district policy and the school laws of Pennsylvania. The preliminary budget calls for a one mil increase in real estate taxes for a total of eighty seven point two five mils, that's Westmoreland County. Rate for Allegheny County would be fifteen point one two mils. Rate for Allegheny County would be 15.12 mils.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. Christina, before I, I read the motion as presented by Dr. Koschko, I'd like to be able to ask him a question, if he would consider an amendment, can I do that? Before we even read it?
No, you have to have the motion on the floor.
Well, I would like to ask him if he'd reconsider his initial amount to something else.
That's a new motion.
In order to discuss the motion, you have to have it second, and then is the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move to tentatively adopt the preliminary budget for the Penn Trafford School District for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $57,467,366 for advertisement and publication in accordance with district policy and the school laws of Pennsylvania. The preliminary budget calls for a one-mil increase in real estate taxes for a total of 87.25 mils. The rate for Allegheny County will be 15.12 mils. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Another question?
Question.
All right, so we'll roll call vote, instead of me doing it, and everybody does it together. Mr. Lego, please pull the board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kachasik, Mrs. Issing.
Yes.
Mr. Kachasik.
Yes.
Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Leonard.
No.
Mr. Dallas Leonard. Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Dallas is muted, I muted him, Dallas.
I, I think I'm muted, can you see me?
We can hear you now, Mr. Leonard.
Okay, I had a question, and I couldn't get it out, that's why I was going to vote no anyhow, but a clarification. If we approve this motion as read, we don't have any further tax treaties required for the teacher contract raises. That's correct for this year, right?
Well, all the, all the, all the increases for the contract are calculated in that 57.4 million, so this would be the only increase, there would be no other increase over and above this.
Okay, good, but, no. That's, yeah, and I'm vote, I'm voting no.
Okay, Mr. Matarazzo.
No.
Mr. Nemec.
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci.
I'm someone, I say, I wanted to get in, but I didn't get in before. Now, if we come down, now, Brett, just, I think I'm correcting this, but I'm asking you to reassure my feeling. Now, if we get a big reduction in state reimbursement, we can up this millage to make up, so we don't get further than a red, correct?
Well, we can go up to the index, yes, correct, we can go up.
Yeah, I mean, we can change this.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Because I definitely think one mil is, I think it's too low. I want to vote yes on it, but if we get the same subsidy and we can get by with it, I'm okay. But I just want everybody to know that I do not want our performance level to go down, because we're cutting SLAs, and we're here to educate kids, and that's just how I feel. Right now, one mil, I can live with, I wanted to go two mils and then drop down, but if you want to go one mil and have to go up, but I don't want to take away from the education of these kids, because those scores are excellent. My vote's yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stovar.
Yes.
Okay, so you have six yes, three noes, the motion carries, the preliminary budget is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Lego, thank you, fellow board members, as I have this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Okay, Mr. Petrucci, personnel.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. Moving forward to following personnel, new employment and contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation subject act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. A copy of the personnel list will be an official part of the minutes of this meeting. We are going to employ Carol Davis, payroll specialist administrator, billing effective March 18th, it's retroactive, 2020, at the rate of $23 per hour.
Remember, we had an assistant business manager who actually left, and she took a job. She's now the manager for McKee's Sports School District. And instead of replacing Act 93, or, instead of replacing administrator, we actually just.
All right, do I have a second?
Second. Bill Leonard.
I think it was second by Mr. Nemec. Question?
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, no? Motion carries.
I move to accept the following retirement resignation, Lois Bearsford, paraprofessional at Harrison Park Elementary School, effective May 22nd, 2020.
Rich Nemec.
Glory to Harrison, sir.
Got a second by this.
Okay, I'm sorry, I heard other talking. Okay.
Question.
Question, thank you. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? All right, motion carried.
She was our highest-ranked paraprofessional on the senior list, she's been here 20 years. So she did a great job, and I wish her well, and all she does. I know she had lots of kids during the time she was at Penn Trafford School District. She worked in all the different schools, at one point Harrison Park was her most recent.
Hey, Maury, is this, Maury, is this Mike Bearsford relative, I guess, I guess, huh?
I'm not sure, there, there's too many brothers with too many wives, so I don't know.
Okay.
Call him, Madam President.
I think she's related to Nick somehow, too.
Everybody is.
There's, there's no vault yet in that name, Dallas.
Hey, wait a minute, Nick, there's no vault yet in my name, does that mean you don't love me?
I love your reassessment, Dallas. You and Blue go hand in hand. I'm sorry.
All right, solicitors report. Anything to report, Mrs. Lane?
Yes, Madam President, I just want to add that, as you've indicated, the board met prior to this meeting for executive session for personnel matters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I thought I listed up, and maybe I didn't. Okay, at this point, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Dallas.
Dallas, do I have a second?
Second, by Scott.
Scott, all right, this meeting is adjourned at 8:17 PM. Thank you all.
Good night.
Break down to our living room. All right, bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy trails.
Night all.
Good night, y'all.
Night all.